Are we rolling, Josh?
Yep.
Yep. The law is in order, the regular April school meets the Solon Community School records. This mission of the Solon Community School is to convey each and every student's business and enrollment expenses. Maximize achievement for exceptional teaching. Chris, you want to call it all?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, Wolf, here. Get the fact.
Here.
Celesta.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Uh, Coons is absent, but my understanding is in the city limits, so he'll be here very shortly. We'll make an announcement when he gets here, so we have it for our records. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move the celebration of achievements to item number one.
Motion to move celebration of achievements to the top of the agenda.
Well, second.
Second by Adam. All those appearing, sign by saying aye.
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 Uh, thanks, everyone, to your responsibility, that's very unanimously. We all just want to give you some of the achievements, we'll move the words in.
And slide thirty-one. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you.
All you do so far is roll.
Okay.
Here. I'm going to introduce Kerry Coons, our talented and gifted teacher, and allow you to introduce your students. And a little background.
Yes, um, so with me this evening is Summer Boiesman. Stand up, we'll move this way. Um, and earlier this, this year, Summer entered into a writing contest at the University of Iowa, and as some of you may or may not be aware, University of Iowa has a low-renowned writing program, and Summer was the winner of the seventh and eighth grade portion of that writing contest. And so, um, she is here tonight to share with you her piece of writing for you to hear and for us to celebrate this incredible accomplishment that she has achieved. So, thank you for coming tonight, Summer. And if you're all right with that, she, she can read what she wrote.
Absolutely, we're all right with that. And then remember, remind me, we addressed this before, but then said this was important and we absolutely wanted her to be.
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Congratulations.
So, the title of this was, the bird scene, if you call. The requirements for this was that it had to be a thousand words or less, and would be given to prompts that incorporated either a character and an object, and mine is a musician and a dove. Mama gave me a wet piece of cheap and a paper bag of grease leftovers from a late night shift. Stale fries, fried chicken charred at the bottom for five. Home poor dog, she said with a tight lipstick smile. Love the baby. Of course, love it to mom. The walk to the metro isn't long, just a couple of blocks. There was a bustle of people, small petrol unit flashing lights of a guide pass sign. It was a busy street during the subway station, the chatter from Union stores. A flock of dove, dressed in tarot ones of them, staring with beady eyes at the traffic. Fifteen minutes until the next shut-in. I propped the book to avoid it, but December air blew full proxy breath to put my nose. Everybody stopped. That's about my song. On the sidewalk corner was a man with a face in speed, sparsely capable, drinking beer, listening to his favorite quarter tune. He rested a violin with a brush short, tilting it beneath his chin. He'll tell us playing about these worn shoes. His face is golden, long, unfit, ear close to the front. His lips were dry and a little bit scabs, the glutes of some of his body were scruffy and handsome, like that sea turtle. I watched as he pressed a bowl of strings, began a losing melody. The sound was soft and pleasing. A man holding a string, willing strokes, a sense of urgency to the music, which fell from distant wrongs to bright shrapnel. The dove swept in waves and power once, it surrounded the land, answering the beckoning of music. How we could not withdraw from the violin and be paid in a thought, little rain and preaching, with clean and wet his hair. The ball flew against the stream, singing a sharp oiling sound, until the melody became slow and bitter sweet and fading. He gave a brief and boring sequence, she recalled the dove. I felt my legs were just falling, seeing my house, shuffling in the wind, just like the bar of five dollars' bill. I snooped down to look at the chain of violins. As I stood, he nodded in my direction and said, "Thanks, son." I started the violin at the subway early to watch the moon. Wasn't long before I learned it was Edmond. He frequented the street corner these days, and brought it back to Birdseye for the weed store on a Sunday morning, with a thank you to the function, and took a smile. The street corner was the place where women read gossip magazines, the barber shop, florist's market. Her businessman, who will cherry-tune about the cream of tea, the skinny boy with shiny shoes. For girls who love the government, drew the business of the long straws at the diner. Edmond smiled upon them all, eating rachis and rolling a sandwich from the deli for breakfast, or a pan of tuna in breakfast. He'd stand at the corner of the street and draw a pouch from his pile of pouch, sprinkling bird seed for the doves. He was looking at them. The birds came when he called, when his violin cried out for them, and made clean his ear while rustling their feathers against his skin. When I took the metro home, I see Edmond littering the lawn map in the library. He didn't play much in the afternoon. Snowflakes started to spill out of streets, falling to the depths of his holes. And when the cold was hard, she danced on the wrenches in the subway station. The doves followed him, bringing his head nestling into his chest. When his fingers weren't too frosty, he played the violin, and the sad wailing music that echoed through the metro. I listened to his melodies, and dug into my pockets of expansion, tipped it into his hand, seemed to be the mom. "Where's your metro theme, Mom?" he said. "I lost it, Mom." "I'm sorry, Mrs. Spencer, I'm sorry." He would roll a newspaper, hold it near my side of the head, I didn't eat very much. As winter passed, Edmond stopped running. His fingers grew on the floor, and the violin stayed locked in its case. He spent his days on dune in the metro, shivering. Even then, he scraped up enough change to feed the doves, which seemed to always be swarming him. It was snowing heavy one evening, and I sat next to Edmond, and ate him a lunch. Hot biscuits and gravy, Mom heated up for me. You need to eat, because I accept. Edmond turned to me. "Thank you," he said, for the little mom. He unfurl the paper bag, made the justus, spread his gravy. He didn't chew. His scab lips slipped into his mouth. He played for me then, one last time. His music was a previous, the dove circled me. And if you knew it all, he gave a chortle stop and said, "Go on, home now, go. While you're playing a prom, don't go giving no attention." Which is fair. And give your mom a kiss, Mom. I did. I went home that night in prescription, told her I was sorry about our fights, but I loved her good and properly, I'd be more careful about my mom. Edmond was at the metro one few nights ago. Four minutes. The doves were circling, looking for him, listening for him to sing. When I realized he wouldn't be coming back, I took the long way. I ended up at the street corner, and in the middle of the weed store. There was a woman behind the counter. "So, that was necessary." "How much would it cost to Birdseye?"
Thanks. Yeah. So, I think I understand this right. You just give the prompt, so that how much time do you have to?
Uh, we're two days.
Two days. Two days, yeah. That's amazing. Yeah, really cool.
So, thank you very much.
Is that published, so that, is that published somewhere on the?
It's on the University of Iowa website for the contest.
So, we can, we can get that, uh, I went for that to show on, uh, to show off.
Yes, absolutely.
That would probably be outstanding. Yeah. It's always good to see, unless we've done it, also, like, we.
Yeah.
Right. Yes. We'll definitely take some picture in your head.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, yeah, back to welcome everyone. The first one, everyone. First, we have witnessed to.
Yeah, I, I just have a couple of questions. Um, Seth, are you planning on speaking?
No.
No, okay. You, you had said no, but then you wrote COVID, so I just wanted to make sure. Um, and we do have six people that have signed up. We'll go in order of how you signed up. You will be allowed three and a half minutes. I'll raise my hand at three minutes. Um, maximum is five minutes, but again, if you go five minutes, somebody else is going to lose some minutes, but that's how it works, okay? Um, Jen Irwin. And if you would get step on her exit.
Hi, my name is Jen Irwin, and I have been a part of the Solon community for many years. I graduated from Solon, we turned to teach at a high school for a few years, and now we are raising our second, third, and eighth grader here. I want to express my gratitude to the school district for working to keep our children in school all year. As an educator, I know how difficult of a job this has been for parents, students, teachers, faculty, administrators, and board members. The willingness to stay open in November when so many other schools closed is a testament to the importance of quality education and serving the needs of our children. I know there was pushback on that decision, but the district chose to see the benefits to keeping students in school, and the evidence shows that it was the right one. Since at least last, since at least March twenty-first, there has not been a day with more than nine of our students in staff quarantine and less than two percent absent. This implies that this virus has run its course like influenza and the COVID virus. I am not here to make light of the seriousness some had faced this past year of coworkers seeing firsthand the effects, suddenly losing people we love, and those who continue to struggle following the COVID diagnosis. However, we have to separate what has happened to adults in the elderly and look at what is best for our four to eighteen-year-old healthy children and the statistics behind that, especially now, since so many of those adults have fully been vaccinated. I ask you to think critically about this past year, and what is best for students. To activate your logical reason, we'll listen to what makes sense, not limited to what the media is telling us. The initial purpose with a strict COVID nineteen protocols was to reduce the number of fatalities and not to overwhelm our healthcare systems. The Solon COVID database does not show us even coming close to our students and our staff overrunning that healthcare system. If you only look at our Solon community, would we feel that our community is in a pandemic? No. Do I have a PhD in medicine to tell you that? No. But is there a high risk to mask your children at school right now? No. As a community, you need to look at local numbers, not what is school-based, like the media from other cities or states. The data and this year's past experiences has shown us that most children are not even significantly affected by the COVID virus. Data has also shown that schools in general have not been hubs of the COVID transmission. I witnessed this firsthand today when I am at school. The system, the symptoms in children are minor. COVID has shown to be less dangerous to children than the seasonal flu in previous years. It is time to really think and look at the data from this school year and ask yourselves, is quarantining students really necessary? How many children who were quarantined this year in the Solon community actually tested positive for COVID while they are quarantined? My guess is few, if any. So, why are we still treating healthy children like they have the plague? Masks need to be optional for students while outside and not used thus. And the Lakeview newsletter that was published earlier this month did not say anything about wearing masks outside. As more frequent, breaks also need to be given to new masks within the classroom. Many of our students don't ask because they feel it is wrong. Snack time and taking short drink breaks is not a break. I know teachers utilize bill-o-o-o and take brain breaks, the same speech called through for masks. It is not normal for our healthy kids to have these on for the duration of a school day. Young children are in crucial developmental years in which masks affect children's linguistic, emotional, and social development. Communication is greatly inhibited with the use of masks. As an adult, it is difficult to read what a person is saying. Were we really smiling when Rick asked us how we were doing today? Nobody knows. How can we expect that from children, especially when communication is a key part of socializing and learning? If we believe that these masks drastically protect students from particle viruses of bacteria, this is hugely inaccurate. Daily, I witness students and staff constantly touching their masks with their hands, putting it in their pockets, setting it on the desk, throwing it on the floor, and then we expect them to put it back on. The masks themselves are trapping all that bacteria and virus particles, then we have, and then we ask them to put it close to their mouth, well, they're breathing that in constantly throughout the day. Though it is subtle, the message we are sending to the kids is that the air they breathe is not safe nor healthy, and that it's still severe. School is the safest place for children. Their cohorts in classes are like a mini-family. I ask that if a student requests a half-mass break or has their mask up, that peer and adult pressure from the staff and the other students needs to be stopped. This not only creates a deeper divide among the staff and the students, all I'm asking is that the district considers the overall academic, physical, and emotional health of our children to allow freedom of choice regarding mask usage. These kids, they are just kids. We need to be realistic for what kids need and what they are capable of.
Fifteen seconds.
As adults, we have many different viewpoints. Please let our adult opinions and politics be set aside in our decision-making, and let kids be kids.
Thanks, Dan. One thing I did forget to, like you guys know, is the board listens, but they won't respond. It's not a conversation. I apologize, I didn't say that before, but. Um, Landon, you're next.
Uh, hi, my name is Landon Oldholt, and I'm here to speak on behalf of some COVID nineteen policies that were enacted in school here. I also want to continue to thank the board, really, for keeping the schools open, and we don't have to look very far outside this community to see that that wasn't always the case everywhere, and that is very much appreciated. At this time, however, I'd like the school order, uh, kind of look at a few things over the past year. And number one thing that's really hindering a lot of students right now is the mask-wearing recess. I mean, we see kids all over this community every day, outside of school, whether it's football, volleyball, all sporting events. Even down my street, I see kids riding bikes, shooting hoops in the street with no mask on with their friends every day. So, why would we require them to wear masks at recess? I feel that's absolutely unreasonable. Uh, secondly, at the beginning of school year, uh, we really didn't know a lot about COVID, and with the quarantining, the, obviously, the government was changing their regulations, it seemed like, on a daily basis. And like my, my own son got quarantined fourteen days, he's perfectly healthy, never got sick, and he was home for fourteen days in the middle of resting season, obviously, pretty upset about that. But I know the school district did what they had to do at the time. Obviously, November was a peak season for COVID, if you look at the numbers. But I guess going forward, the vaccinations and all the data we have, I'd like to see those policies loosen up a little bit and have some, hopefully, the parents can have some input on that quarantining of their children if they've been exposed. Uh, another policy consistency I'd like to talk about is, I was, I haven't really got a good answer, I'm looking for an answer on why we can have band and chorus at high school level, but no other level. I mean, at high school level, we had competitions, concerts, and all things like that, that SIS and Lakeview and Middle School. I guess it was too dangerous, so I'm not sure I'm right. And as far as mask-wearing goes, I mean, we see administrators and students all over this community on a daily basis, whether it's at grocery stores, restaurants uptown, and backyard barbecues and neighborhood gatherings. And they're not wearing masks or socially distancing them while we, and the kids notice this. And how we expect our children to be masked up during the day when they're seeing faculty in the community this time, doing the same thing also. And as of this morning, there was over eight hundred thousand Iowans that have completed the two-shot vaccine series, including the teachers within this district that wanted the shot, have had the shot, and were two weeks past that safe zone. So, I guess, to kind of summarize things up, I feel like our children are not at risk, I don't feel like the teachers are at risk, and our numbers and data in this zip code specifically prove this. So, to end this school year, I'd like to reduce the mask-wearing, reduce the quarantining, and give our students back the freedom, normalcy, and excitement to end the school year, going into the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Um, Seth.
Hi, I'm Seth Gates. Um, first of all, as a parent of a third and sixth grader, I'd like to thank you all for making the tough decisions to keep the kids in person this year. Um, it's obviously been invaluable, we're super grateful to be part of this whole school district. Uh, speaking as an incoming kindergarten parent, I was very concerned when reading through the kindergarten roundup Zoom slides. The slide highlighting the mitigation strategies for next fall still stated that masks will be expected and that students will be in pods with designated recess zones. This is not how I want my child to start their education journey. Studies have shown that up to fifty-five percent of verbal communication or speech is through facial expression. Masking our teachers and our students is placing another barrier on learning language and reading for these younger kids. Being unable to see the way the mouth forces words and enunciates while reading and speaking is slowing your development as well. I know kids are resilient, but why give them another obstacle to progress? Along with the educational drawbacks of wearing masks while learning to read and write, my bigger worry as a parent was their mental and social health. My son has dealt with separation anxiety in the past. He struggles with new people, let alone people with half their faces covered. I know as an adult, when I see people in public with masks on, I tend to avoid eye contact because it's dehumanizing. The masks teach children that other people are not safe and that they are dangerous to other people. Every time we go to the family without our masks, it's like I'm constantly reminding my kids, "We're not scared of people, and they're not scared of you, we're okay." And this is not normal. School should be a place where children feel safe and comfortable so that they can thrive. Keep in mind, it's the same kids who are hanging out with friends and participating in sports, school sports, mask-free the minute they get home from school, as they should be. At what point are we protecting them by masking them at school? And at what cost? Kids should not live in fear. I work at a gym in town where masks are not required, and so many of our members have thanked us because they've said it's the one place they can go that feels normal. It's their happy place, there is no fear and no judgment. Our kids deserve to have a place like that as well. They need to see happiness and smiles, they need to know that they are safe, and it is safe to be close to your friends and teachers. I know I speak for an overwhelming number of people in the school district when I say that next fall, we do not want a new normal for our kids, we want normal. I've always been proud to see that my kids go to Solon, and hopefully, we can support each other to make decisions and to continue with this first.
Thank you, Seth. Uh, David.
Hi, uh, David Owens. Uh, my wife and I have free kids in the school system and a fourth in the community system next year. Uh, and so, I have the words of Cassie Roque, she was unable to make it today, um, but I fully agree with everything she had to say, so I'll read that for you. There's a lot we can be proud of, and we are especially proud to be able to send our children to a school where they can feel welcome, safe, and loved. For this year, in this unprecedented year, we still had the choice to send our students to school in an in-person learning environment. I applaud the district for starting the year off on the right track. Your approach to the Return to Learn Plan by combing through data and guidance, and most importantly, you also included the community in your decision. The parent surveys helped you inform your decision about keeping the schools open and giving parents a choice. As a result, we've been able to retain our enrollment, retain our proficiency rates and academic success, keeping with our strategic goals, ninety-five percent of students reaching proficiency in math, ELA, science, and social studies. I look forward to watching our graduates receive their diplomas next, this month, next month. I'm ready to consider the voice and the asks of those who spoke before me to see the evidence from our local data and defend the decisions of removing the masks, loosening some of the constraints and restrictions, the quarantines, and retain our enrollment and our funding going into next year. Be proud to stand up for the students, the parents, and the teachers. Make the right choice to end the year positively, giving back the students the track and field day, end of year celebrations. Build and foster that relationship between educator and student, finishing the school year on a positive note, where we can all feel confident that we are supporting our students and giving them what they need to be successful. As we look into the next year, solicit the voice of the community, as you did last summer. Lean on the SIAC committee, use experts in learning and education to consider the cognitive and non-p cognitive skills that need to be addressed. Continue the momentum in creating equality and access to the quality education at the Solon School District, and support the district's strategy goal of all students will increase their sense of belonging, well-being socially and emotionally. Make the right choice for our students. On behalf of all the spoken and unspoken voices in the room, we thank you for your time.
Jason.
Sorry, I was in the, yeah, I myself into the room. So, um, my name is Jason Burns, I'm a parent, I'm a third grader, uh, at Lakeview, and I wanted to thank everyone, I'm not going to give a long prepared speech or anything like that today. I just asked that if there's ever a consideration made to changing any of the policies or procedures that you, uh, not only listen to the community, but do as you've done throughout the year, which is make your decisions in consultation with the Johnson County Department of Public Health. Make sure that you listen to not just the people in the community, but also the people who have training and are able to advise you as to, uh, what policies and procedures may be right and appropriate for your district. I know you've done so all along this year. I know anytime there was a quarantine situation, or a time where there may have been an exposure to somebody in the classroom, we always were encouraged and also felt better knowing that when we got that letter from the school district, it talked about how you were working with the Johnson County Department of Public Health, making your decisions and your trackings and everything. And I encourage and hope that everyone, if there's any decisions to be made or any changes to be made to policies or procedures, that you always listen, and not only to the people in the community, which is very important, that their voices be heard, but also to the, uh, the experts and people at the Department of Public Health, I can advise you, either at the state or the local. Thank you.
One last person, and I apologize, I'm struggling with reading the first name, is it?
Isaiah.
Isaiah? All right, come on up, sir. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Isaiah Zoski, and I'm in eighth grade. My family moved to Solon last summer, we couldn't be happier in this town and school system. Everyone has been very welcoming, Solon should be very proud of its people. I'd like to start off by thanking the school board and the administration that allowed us to attend school in person this year. I would guess the decision to go in person last fall didn't go without serious consideration. At the time, there were many sayings, there's no way we should return to school in person, that it was too dangerous. Instead of listening to those people, the school board and administration decided to make the best decision based on data, science, and common sense. I am thankful you did listen to those that tried to keep us home out of fear and political motivation. It's clear, looking back, you acted with true leadership and the best in weeks of kids, thank you. Many policies were put in place to reduce the risk of onsite learning. At the time, it made sense to be overly cautious and ensure that we were able to stay in school. Over the past year, we have learned so much more about this virus, who is at risk and how it is spread. It's time to look at those policies and apply the same data, science, and common sense. For one, let us use lockers. It has been proven that service, the risk of simply contracting COVID from the surface is one in ten thousand, according to the CDC, to compared to another daily risk. Odds of dying from choking is one in twenty-five hundred. Odds of dying in a car crash are one in a hundred and seven. Data, science, common sense. It's a tough time to take off the mask, they don't work, period. They haven't worked in states with, states and cities with mandates, and there is plenty of data to show it. MLCs say they, quote-unquote, may prevent, prevent the spread. Why are we putting our faith in masks? Is there a political virtue now? I don't think it is further, that it goes playing politics with us in school. On top of the fact that masks don't work, they're extracting, dirty, and quite honest, honestly, make us all want to go crazy. Masks at recess completely nuts. Food is only thirty percent of our day when we leave in school, when we leave school and play, do activities, go to church, hang out with friends, play sports, go out to eat, we don't wear masks. We see our teachers, parents, and classmates hanging outside of school. So, so many of us don't have masks. Yeah, we have to cut them to school and wear them? Why? Kids aren't at risk, and teachers have been vaccinated, we don't wear masks for safety, it's political. Data, science, common sense, it's wrong, and it's time for the administration, the school board to support the kids and let us go back to normal. My parents have always taught us that, that you can't lead by following, and if you are doing something just because of everyone else's, you need to question it. Solon needs to show it's a leader. Mitt Perry and Luke Butler are taking their masks off, leaders, not followers. School board and administration made the right decision in the fall, needs to make the right decision now. You didn't, you didn't listen to fear and politics in the fall, and it was the right decision. Why would you do it now? It's time to return tomorrow, take the mask off. Thank you.
Isaiah, thank you. I'm very proud of a eighth grade coming here, you seemed like you were very confident in speaking for your friends.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's very impressive, I was not even able to get my fifth grade friend there. You should be proud, sir. Okay, uh, that's it.
Thanks, everyone, you spoke, um, as personally as you can. This is a bit of a big advisory, a public knowledge that I've been, you guys haven't ever say. As we continue discussing, as the, as the year goes along, uh, all the input from in-person and the emails and the phone calls we get, those all fed back to the students, they go to the administration, and by the end. So, again, thank you for taking the time to come and speak with us tonight. With that, the next item on the agenda is the administrative reports, and I believe Mr. Wybode is up first.
Yeah. I shared a document with you guys, and we have a chance to, to kind of look at that. Um, ultimately, we wanted to make sure that we, um, made the best decision for our students next year, after working through all of the challenges and opportunities this year, both with our schedule and creating more opportunities for kids. So, looking at what we would want to do with kind of that master schedule format moving forward, um, we wanted to get feedback from a variety of, of people, so. We had about three hundred students, my tenth elementary graders, that, that filled out a survey specific to things that, um, they really. they really thought were useful or purposeful over the course of the last five or six months when we took the survey, and then also things that we wanted to make sure that we didn't keep or continue to work through as we move forward. Did the same thing with our staff, and some of those responses, I mean, ranged from, this was, you know, the worst year ever to thankful to be a part of, you know, such a creative staff and find ways to keep kids in school. So but I did want to highlight some of those things that we want to move forward with moving into next year. So we're going to go away from our two, kind of that two-block, two-hour system that we put in place this year with all the different rotations. That was not something that was best for our students. Definitely clear with the feedback from both students and staff. So we're going to go back to our four-by-four block. Four quarters. So students would have the opportunity to take four classes at a time in any given quarter for nine, nine-and-a-half weeks. Now, one of the changes that we made with that, though, based on the feedback from, again, students and staff, was the late start to the day. So we are going to implement a zero block. So what that means is we're going to extend our academic day by about a half an hour. So we're going to start at eight o'clock, and we're going to go until three-thirty with zero block taking place in the morning from eight to eight forty-five. There's going to be a variety of things that will happen. We haven't finalized our full-blown kind of tight loose during that zero block time. It won't be like it was this year where that was when band inquire is. Band inquire will still be during first block. They're going to remove some of the extracurricular, co-curricular things that they were doing during that first block time and maybe have it during zero block. Our blocks are going to be reduced from about eighty-four minutes to eighty minutes. We're going to transition to one lunch, which is forty-five minutes. Campus is going to close for all of our freshmen. It was open this year, and we are actually encouraging kids to leave. That's not going to be the case for ninth graders. Sophomores will have the opportunity to leave for lunch if they meet the open campus guidelines, which are outlined nicely in our handbook. We're going to tweak it a little bit. It's not something that I've asking people that have been at high school for the last twenty years. It was never enforced and never followed through with. So we're going to tweak it a little bit to actually work for what we need. So sophomores, juniors, seniors that want to leave, we'll be able to leave for lunch during that forty-five minutes. But we're not going to encourage them to. We're not going to make them at all. They can definitely stay, and we'll have space for them to eat with how we've kind of been able to structure our spaces. So then we'll still have those two blocks after lunch. We're going to move seminar to the end of the day, and it's only going to be four days a week. So on Thursdays, we'll split Smith at one forty-five, but we won't have seminar. Some of the reasons behind that, again, this wasn't just a decision that I made. We had a group of ten, ten teachers at the high school and myself that spent a few hours diving through all the all the data and then meeting together to kind of craft what this was going to look like. And the big reason for moving seminar to the end of the day, number one, we wanted to make sure that kids didn't feel like they we wanted during the lunch, it's been hard for kids to stay in seminar this year, and I think moving to this next year, we want to make sure that they understand this is a time, a resource time for them to get help from teachers, time to meet in clubs and groups. We've talked with, you know, both our food service director, Becky West, and our transportation to identify kids that ride the buses, how we're going to have a plan for them if they need to leave. Such a small number, we have a good plan, I think, in place for that as well, so it shouldn't impact too much. Also thinking about, I don't know, for our current freshmen, I mean, our sophomores and juniors too. They only had two classes at a time, and yes, some of those were pretty rigorous throughout the course of those four-and-a-half weeks. But they're going to go back to four classes, so allowing them to have a little bit more time in the morning to either sleep in or get some work or some help, that's going to be time again for them to do that, and it was really something that they appreciated this year in the feedback from the survey. So I won't talk anymore. I kind of explained it all in that that document that I shared with you. So if you haven't looked at it, go ahead and do that, but I'm happy to answer any questions specific to our schedule as well.
Questions on board? Yeah, the zero block?
Yep.
Okay, so for teachers, they will be available then?
Hundred percent, yep.
Because it's been hitting this sometimes, obviously COVID and all that stuff.
So yeah, it was different this year because that was their, that was their prep time. So some teachers would use that and have kids, but this is not going to be their prep.
Okay.
This is a hundred percent on.
Yeah, I think the other thing that's nice about this, if you have seminar at the end of the day, you have kids, you have to be dispensed early for activities. They're not missing class time per se. They're missing, they're missing seminars. So I think that those are two positive things, I think, especially when kids need to reassess if they know they've come and someone's going to be there. That's going to be awesome.
Zero block starts at?
Eight o'clock.
So that one runs about forty minutes?
About forty minutes, yep.
Okay. And then the other ones are about twice that.
Eighty minutes. Yep, exactly.
I think you'll have a lot of happy faces, students. I know we had this conversation, but a couple of seniors unusual with the class that perfectly hit the pitch for the start of the day back until about eight point five, nine o'clock. And a lot of research shows that for high school students, people are starting two hours before nine o'clock is academically not great since their body clocks are almost up, so.
Well, our kids are so active. They've got our participation rates and extracurriculars.
Yeah, tonight. And there'll still be a lot of kids that come in like there are now. It's just not, they're not going, you know, right into that first block class that are.
It provides lots of, I think, it's a nice compromise, not pushing the whole day back, but at the same time, not like not requiring students to be there.
We still, like I said, have a fair amount of work to do at our lead learning table, just to craft and create those expectations and what's going to happen when to make sure everyone fully understands what those times look like and what's to be expected.
So what do you have next? Maybe a P U classroom, early block, there's a block, and then gas fire, turns off things like marching band.
Yep, so spent a couple of hours with both, both of those instructors on the fine arts side with Joel and Desmond. Have a really nice plan, kind of from that seven-ten to to eight forty time. And then again, it's almost like a whole nother schedule within the schedule that they kind of craft and create. So during that marching band season, it'll look one way, and then after the marching band season, it'll look a little bit different throughout the course of those, those couple hours.
I noticed you notice that when you mentioned freshmen's complete.
He'll be back in the fall to speed.
Maybe next.
Any other questions?
I just appreciate the question. I said you guys are a big end of schedule and try and take the pieces that work and try and incorporate those. I think that's always, we always appreciate that. We can try and dig into things and find out what works and make the best use of it, you know. I always appreciate the academy doing it. So with that, what with this, does this change any offerings, like teachers able to, I mean, despite it hasn't changed much as far as?
No, it wasn't like this year. The way we created our schedule, we offered thirty-seven additional sections.
Right.
And some of that was because we wanted to make class sizes smaller, but it also created more elective opportunities. This, this won't do that because it's still on a four-quarter, four-by-four block.
Sure.
Those sixteen.
Somewhat unfortunate.
Yeah.
Right.
The only, the only thing it will do is the flexibility for some of our intervention supports that normally happen at the, by the quarter level. They'll, they can have them fluidly throughout the course of the whole year during zero block, which will be, which will be different and unique.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Rose. And I'm going to stay back here. Things that people are looking at fast. If you go back to August, when we opened up, our schedule really focused on limiting transitions, and you know, in a middle school setting, you're, you're coming and going all the time. So we really tried to limit the amount of times kids moved around the building. And so what ended up happening was we incorporated a home-based morning meeting time, which we had planned on anyway. But what ended up happening was if you were in a given classroom, especially the language of arts, having your home base, ended up being in that same room for almost half the day. And I think Isaiah can speak, but that was kind of overkill in a lot of ways. But in reference to Zach's comments, we're about a step behind in that. We surveyed our teachers. We haven't reached out to the kids yet on their opinions. But we asked, we basically listed everything that we've done from pods to cohorts. And is this a no, never again thing, or is it, yes, let's, let's keep that. And obviously, the posse was the first, everybody's, that was really huge for a while, and it served its purpose, but right now, everybody's kind of each other's throats. So that goes out to the board. But the cohort model itself worked really well. It opened our home-based type field, just giving that little bit of an elementary sense of belonging to kids. They identified in that, it's not as intimately as they did in the five, but the cohort was, we're looking at closer. I think what ends up happening is we keep that in our sixth grade, just as a transition piece. They'll still move around the building like it would in a normal, a local setting, but they could just do it with the same. And that would be, would give the kids in and out, but would further enhance that belonging. The, some of the other positive things that we stumbled upon in our mitigation efforts was this whole idea of assigned seats at lunch was total mitigation to be able to identify, because that was going to be the time where masks were down and kids could potentially be exposed. And while we don't want to assign seats and avoid that positive interaction, what we found was in a middle school setting, it's a race for the table or Johnny's left alone, or, you know, it's just socially dysfunctional. The kids just knowing that when they came to the, to eat, they knew where they're going. They just, the transition sped up, no saving seats, and got their leg on the seat, so Isaiah can sit by me. Just a lot of positive social pieces to say about. Wouldn't be something that would keep the same seating all year, but something definitely to look closer at. The backpacks came up. Huge negative in terms of carrying your whole locker around all day, but the thing we realized was, we're approaching May now. We've got, I've had one kid with their homework at home, or it's not in my locker, or I can't find this. So we're looking at some sort of compromise, and we thought bags are a hindrance in the classroom. Almost every single teacher said not props. So some, maybe some form of throwing your morning stuff in and morning and napkin stuff in the afternoon, or something like that. And probably the most surprising thing, I have one comment on using first, and Lynn addressed it too. We were able to do school like school with really two exceptions. Our interventions were basically zero. Our interventionist, Louis Smith, we had a couple of pockets where we could keep doing it. But as far as system-wide intervention, that was kind of a bust all year, and our views was a bust. And the cohort model instead of going band or choir, excuse me, every other day, with one day a week, and not all I really wanted to visit with that. So we'll get back to prior point. But the most surprising thing was, and we tried going without bells before, and it's always, it just hasn't worked. But we went without bells and staggers are passing times, so that sixth graders moved at one time, seventh graders moved at another time, eighth graders moved at the other time. Amazing. You can walk through the building very, excuse me, one of the three thousand times, and you wouldn't even know it's passed. Whereas in the normal setting, it's, you know, four minutes of chaos, and that's where you're always called to pass. So like I said, we're, we're a step behind the high school in terms of having a final copy down, but that's just perfect.
One thing I would add is we're going to get some students input, just feedback around this on Monday with our peer leaders of the high school, and then as soon as that's kind of done and completed, we're going to push out all, all this communication to our current two-eighth graders, so they kind of see what that looks like, and obviously, their schedules becoming prior to the events.
So Mike, so it sounds like the, we had a system where we kept up the fourth, the fifth grade, that would make a fifth grade available. So it's kind of resurrecting that, suspend classes a little bit.
I would probably limit that to sixth grade.
This is strange. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We kind of downwound the fifth grade for a while when we had the first.
Yeah.
It went away and then the fifth grade moved to the, to the B. I was just trying to get my head around all of that. Questions on board? Thank you, Mike. Davis, you got a couple of things?
Two quick items. We've been discussing, Casey and I have met a couple times with representatives of Shields. Shields has identified our community as a community that they want to pilot. Pilot a program that they currently have done in Loveland, Colorado. Part of their, part of this would be, with Shields, would be kind of a branding, promotions, and I'm putting this in discounts or promotions, discount branding, and equipment, and equipment purchasing. So it would look like three signs, banners that were hanging on our fencing, softball field, baseball field, and our stadium. With those banners, they would agree to give us, and in discussion, where we're at right now is five thousand dollars annually over five years. As part of their branding, they would also, along with that twenty-five thousand dollars, purchase a five thousand dollar home plate stone for the baseball project. On top of that, what they would ask then, when we would, we would look to purchase equipment through them. Matching all prices. If there's specific equipment that they can't get, they're fine with, but they just want the first line of people as far as the district purchasing equipment through them. And then they would also like to run promotions and discounts specific to stolen athletes. So before every sport, we have a coaches, parents, students, athlete meeting. At that meeting, Shields may have some type of card or flyer that all the athletes could take that within like a seven-day window to their store and get all their needs. Their, you know, if it's, if it's their baseballs, or I'm sorry, cleats, undershirts, whatever they, a kid would typically purchase, maybe online or East Bay or from another store, that they would have a discount to go to there. And so nothing's been agreed upon. We've been listening. We've been having discussions, but this is something where it could be, and the idea is, you know, we're seeking ways to generate funding for our activities program or athletics without sending kids out to fundraise. And without asking the parents to, you know, to write a check for every sport, sending a kid out to knock on doors to sell cookie dough that not everybody likes or anything like that. So we're trying to eliminate those activities. Again, Shields, they have a lot of opportunity in the corridor. They came to Solon, and they want to, they want to park with us and, and and just kind of drive this. Now, we have a little advantage where their general management there at the corridor store, one's a former baseball player here in Solon, and one just recently moved here from North Dakota, where he was located, working for Shields, has a sixth grade, has some kids in our system, and so Solon's pretty special to them in that way also. But Shields also believes that Solon's a nice spotlight for other communities, or that it'd be a good place to start. So I'll be coming to you with more information, and if this is a route that you want to explore more, possibly agree to, that's kind of our end.
And then probably, it was, it's not okay, but it's probably a good thing to chat with the things and grounds, maybe talk about, with the impact there, and also have the finance committee on the side. So I need to get some feedback there. Then we'll bring it back for action one way or another, and such, but we, I think. Either at our regular meeting or our schedule, we really need to deal with the Either at our regular meeting or our schedule early, we need to deal with a couple of new state issues as well. So we could get that as well. So, okay, I think, you know. It's a minimal attract, you had a good shot on the table. Cause you some progress and it doesn't require as much activity on the apples today. It's not a concern with raises, it seems like we're constantly, we're something that that is not exciting. Any questions, Mr. Davis?
I just look forward to after you just to visit that, that's a good, we're gonna talk about pros and cons and the benefits. A lot of things we visit about there.
And it's going to be very difficult to lead on this. But if you've got specific questions or comments, if you've got some stuff to be, you've got specific comments or questions, get them to Jamie and Gretel, who are the famous most closely on this. And then after they finish, we'll have the finance.
Quite turn me toward it, Josh folks up, or you've got one more item in the report. And that is every month I give a quick update with COVID or mitigation, such, such like that. Our nurses and our secretaries continue to populate that COVID data board, which again, it was mentioned tonight, our numbers have really looked, looked good. We have since mid-March, meeting as an admin team and with the nurses included to discuss current data, not only in our schools, but in our community. And, and again, look at that, what we've learned from the beginning of the year. And as Isaiah mentioned, just common sense, what we can do as far as starting to maybe pull back a little bit on some of these things. When we first met four weeks ago, we talked, we, we since then have opened up our libraries. Books used to, if they were checked out, I had to sit for 14 days in quarantine. So of course, we now know that it's really not a surface, surface virus, one in 10,000. So we've opened up libraries, we're checking all our books out, we're not putting them in quarantine. Math manipulatives are used now in instruction, kids are sharing those. We're not wiping those down after every night or, or then putting them away for a week until they get wiped down. So sharing microscopes, we've asked principals to work with their teachers about, you know, they open up more opportunity for kids to gather for small groups or enter, mix in groups and, and just open up some of our instructional practices. We've also talked about locker availability and, you know, in the little high school when students are requesting a locker, not many do, but giving, providing that option for students also. We just met recently and the topics where we discussed most, eliminating masks at recess and then identifying more times, being more intentional with breaks, providing kids breaks during the school day. Allowing kids to request their own breaks when we do independent work. You know, like the intermediate building, a lot of the kids spill out in the hallway sometimes during independent work. If you walk down that hallway, they are well spread out as they're doing their independent work. They give them a chance just to do their work without a mask on. These are the things that we, we discussed and are, are working to transition towards. One thing that, that keeps, you know, we've talked about masks, we've talked about, are they effective, are they not effective? We really don't get into that argument because regardless, following the Iowa Department of Education guidelines. And we use the Iowa Department of Education. Johnson County's different, more stringent, more national. The reason why we continue to use masks is because they keep kids in school. We are still required to contact trace. That's a requirement, our hands are, we have to contact trace, we're required to do that. By contacting tracing, we can keep kids in school if it's determined that kids were masked. And so it has really helped us limit our numbers. So we're trying to balance that portion with the mask use, but finding ways. Because as long as kids are six feet apart, they're good to go. If they're within six feet, as long as everyone is masked, they're safe. If one person is not masked and that one person would happen to test positive, then even the kids masked, according to the Iowa Department of Public Health, are required to quarantine. Now, the quarantine has been 14 days. We are shifting towards the Iowa Department of Public Health, which is seven to 10 after a test. So now you can still, if you all want to test, then it's 14 days and you have that optional. So so there's some things that we're, we're balancing, again, trying to use some common sense, look at our numbers, look at what we've learned, start to pull that back, especially when we're outdoors. And let's still maintain until, until we get word that we no longer require contact traces. When we get that word, then it's a different ballgame. So that's where we're at right now and we'll continue, you know. We looked at, we opened the library, we did the books, we did the thing, nothing changed. Our number stayed the same. So we reviewed that two weeks later, great, what else can we do? And so we'll implement some of these new things in, in a couple of weeks, we'll look at our numbers again, great, what else can we do? And so we're, we're, we'll pull back easily to get us to the end of the year.
Yeah, we know, we see people here and that's interesting. And so it's, it's difficult because what we want isn't always what we're governed to do. And that's so hard, you know, obviously it's really hard. We've got the same kids around, we see them in our parks, by their houses and all those things. But we still have someone we're covered by and, and I appreciate and I ask you to continue to push the Iowa Department itself on especially things like recess and some of these outdoor activities now that it's getting, that we can find more times, you know, I know CDC a couple of weeks ago was talking about three feet, where they're talking about seven days and, and all these things are moving targets and, you know, CDC will move and Iowa Department all play out fast enough. And who do you listen to and, and I know that's difficult, but as long as we're evaluating this weekly and continuing to listen and watch, I think that's what the board wants. I don't, I don't want to speak to the whole board, but you know, the faster we can get them back to normal, the happier I think they'll be and I think our community.
So schools that are opening up like North Butler, right, and Prairie, I think next week. With, what's the contact tracing with them? They just forget about it and say, hey, we're, we're going, throwing it on, probably they're getting around this.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know, I don't really, you can, it, it, how they view it. And are they willing to, with a positive test, quarantine more so than what may be necessary? I mean, if, if a child at Mid Prairie, no one's masked up in the classroom and one child, I mean, if it's determined that nobody was in, no one in this classroom was masked and they had a positive case in that classroom. If they determine that kids in that classroom were within that positive tested child within six feet of that child for 15 consecutive minutes, then those kids are quarantined. I don't, I mean, every school has a different way of tracing and determining that. So I'm not sure how that will impact Mid Prairie. There'll also be Washington town, there're Washington town too. Now, keep in mind, we do not quarantine kids. We provide Johnson County the contact tracing lineage along and they determine. So that's, that's where it's difficult. Now recess, we believe we can, we can, we can maintain low numbers without quarantine. Because if you've ever observed a recess, especially at the elementaries, when is a child ever standing still within 15 minutes of no child for consecutive minutes? They never stop running, so there's never, I mean, it's, it's like a basketball game. If, if a child tests positive on the basketball court, when, when does anybody within six feet of that one player for 15 consecutive minutes? So that's, that's where we, we believe it's different when we're outside running around compared to inside sitting classroom at a table where you're subjected to be within six feet of somebody for 15 consecutive minutes. So that's why we're trying to kind of pull, leave that, we want to keep kids in school. I mean, 14 days is a long time, a long time. And right now we, we are requiring the 14 days until the government tells us otherwise.
Do you see, on some of those meetings of rhetoric or is, is there things? Cause it's always changing, depending on the organization, it is, you're hearing these things and the goalposts keep moving. That's what makes it hard for a board, a district to, you know, what to follow.
We've done our best to kind of stick with Iowa Department of Public Health. They've been kind of, Dr. Padani, the epidemiologist, she's been pretty spot on. And, and you know, early on where the CDC was saying, which Johnson County lines the CDC, they were saying, hey, if you're within six feet of someone for 15 cumulative minutes, regardless of mask, you go home for 14 days. And, and Iowa, the Department of Public Health, they, they used North Dakota as, as a kind of a study, they observed North Dakota, which went to the method, no, 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 no. We're, we're going to, we're going to say masks are relevant and we're going to say 15 consecutive minutes. And they studied that data, saw that it was effective. And so Iowa Department of Public Health adopted that and we jumped on board and kind of have stayed aligned with them from school year. Iowa City after quarantining 600 students last week, they're now shifting to the Iowa Department of Public Health, taking Harvey.
Well, I think the real challenge is you can always find someone that wants to do what you want to do. You know, and we've stuck with this group for the whole course, you know, the department health there, obviously watching, you know, you're, you're contacting them, you know, as long as we keep in contact with them and do that, so obviously, I want some of that masked up.
I, I think you've got a committed staff to getting back to normal as quickly as we can.
Yep.
We just don't want to throw anything off this close to the end of school year, right?
There's just one question, I know you've got a conversation with Danielle, you had some questions in the community about the governor.
Yeah, I think I sent that document to the boards or you, but we asked that question as far as, it was shortly after North Butler dropped theirs, just giving an opinion on, on a decision if we went that direction relative to the ordinance that Johnson County has. Our legal counsel said they would defer as far as defending us against any litigation for us to recognize the ordinance. It's in, in, in effect, and that's in effect as long as the governor's proclamation is in effect. But it doesn't mean we can't, you know, do some things where we can avoid 15 consecutive minutes and some social distancing that we can't have time during the day when masks aren't expected.
I think you can be, you guys are the key issue. Our board has tried to, I, you guys are closer to the day-to-day application of this. Our goal in the beginning is to find out who the parents of the kids in school. And I believe our goal of board is that we take their personal education to boarding and we kind of challenge you if we may not have that happen safely. I'm sorry, I appreciate you really having the nurses and all the staff in the buildings who made that whole issue at all. I'm happy we made it this far and hopefully we'll continue to make adjustments as circumstances change.
And we anticipate, we anticipate beginning next year, normal, normal. So that's what we're kind of geared up for and it was something just thrown our way that, that would be different. But, you know, with that, you know, much of our success this year too was just the choice that we provided parents in, in a lot of the things that we did onsite, virtual, things like that. So that kind of rolls into observant ordering, I'm going to let Josh go.
That was a perfect transition.
All right, well, Chris said I only get five minutes, so.
And I used up two of them.
Three and a half.
That's why I gave you bullet points, so I can go. So some of the districts around us have, and I've actually had a couple of conversations, Lynn Mar, I've talked with college community. And Davis had talked with Mid Prairie actually, and I know some of other districts who are continuing to explore the possibility of, of offering virtual online school next year as a, as a matter of choice for, for families. Regardless, I think if there's a health, a health condition or practice. And so that's something that Davis talked about extensively and trying to kind of work out a plan. Obviously this year to provide that choice for families, we, we did go with Edmentum so that they have that online option that they still chose. Now, at the beginning of the year, I think we had approximately 100 families who chose to go that route. If you look at my sheet there, we're, we're down K eight, Edmentum, we're down about 31. And you can kind of see the breakdown of grade levels, second grade is a high, is a high user and so is eighth grade. Those are the top two users. Nine, 12 used Apex this year with approximately 11 kids. So we anticipate moving into next year, we'll still have some families. Obviously we have some kiddos with some health conditions and some concerns there. But we also know, I think out of this group for sure, we'll have, we'll have a handful or maybe more of families who choose to utilize that online platform. However, I've also talked with different families who have said, hey, we're going to get ready to come back to school at the beginning of next year. They really chose to stay online just for consistency purposes. You know, and there's mixed results just be based on family circumstances, learning styles of students, where some kids are, they're, they're rocking enrollment, they're doing really well with, with Edmentum. And we have some kids as they look at their progress, they're struggling a little bit. But, you know, it, it's a mix. And so the one thing that appreciated about Edmentum this year really has been their flexibility, their communication. I get communication weekly from them. If there's an issue with progress being made by a student, they contact me and we work through communication or issues or flexibility. And really, as we think about this year, the purpose of this was to provide an online option for flexibility. And that's what I've stuck to all year. I have not pressed attendance, I have not pressed on grades, I've not pressed on a lot of things just because of just the situation and really trying to be flexible. So as we move into next year, considering what this might look like, I mean, again, I, I think we're, we're considering probably a handful of families, but hopefully opening 20 to 25 spots for next year that potentially for, for online school. So we plan to, again, go back to Edmentum and use that vendor to support just because of their collaboration, ability to problem solve, communication with families and just working with us. So as we move into next year, really think about this online school as being an extension of a regular educational program for us. Again, we know that we have our neighboring districts, Cedar Rapids, Iowa City have, are, created their own online school for open enrollment. We don't want to see our kids go open enrollment to, to another district. We want to keep them here as much as we can. So we want to offer this as an option for them. So, but as we think about this, again, it'll, it'll really be an extension of a regular educational program. They'll, and, and accessing that will just be, like we said this year, just another building in our district. We want to be able to provide the choice, a continued choice for K twelve families and students. Again, really think about Edmentum, they have those live lessons, they have the live teacher connecting. They have the rigorous curriculum offerings, adaptive and responsive to the needs of our, our kids and families and to the needs and expectations of the district. They have proven collaborative service and aligned with chapter twelve in Iowa code. Really thinking about the requirements and expectations for participation, probably upping those, again, this year, been really flexible with families, but we've got to get to some sense of normalcy and rigor in terms of following some of those expectations, in terms of attendance, course completion, really examining and supporting kids as they go through that and, and helping support them to put their achievement levels. Thinking about eligibility requirements for extracurricular activities, seventh and twelfth grade as well. We'll probably have some sort of an application process and approval, which honestly, there can be several different reasons, could be health, medical related, specific students' needs. I think some of the news stories out there have cited how, and some of the conversations I've had, for some kids, it works, for other kids, it's awesome, because they just, they don't, they don't like to engage in the social aspect of schools. They just want to focus on, on learning, so that, that's, that's a benefit to that, for those needs, other circumstances, preference. But we want to make sure that parents really understand what they're getting into, I think, the beginning of this year, not everyone really truly understood what this meant. It really truly wasn't set your child in front of the computer and go, and I can leave them alone, there is a lot of support involved with that. You know, and thinking about registration and participation commitments, home tech, and making sure they have home technology and infrastructure viability in their homes, they'll support that, look at the virtual school calendar and how that aligns to the regular school calendar. Are there any implications there, because it is a little bit different, more flexibility in terms of completion of, of work and, and complete work, we actually had a couple of families this year who called me from Florida and they were doing work. So it just provides that flexibility and it worked. And then also continue to provide that virtual school administrator, looking at, again, from a school district standpoint, possibly our director of physical being a support for that, approach online virtual school, and then all the other additions. So I think that was more than five minutes, but.
Think to traditional homeschoolers that didn't do Edmentum.
It wasn't.
Only three.
Four, but they're coming back, they've had enough of that.
Kids are the parents. The parents are going to school and the kids are going to.
And I, and I think some have kind of tiptoed in the homeschool and the virtual kind of balance.
So Josh, what are the opportunities there, things that might, you know, some, most, most. They do what they can take some general education classes, you know, you get those out of the way so they can go over a summer. So you can get out of the way and, and have more flexibility to take the other classes during school year.
So I think with Apex, what we're looking at is continue to use Apex as credit recovery, and then utilizing Edmentum for the regular education for the, the chapter twelve.
And that's. I would interpret you, you know, you always have that, so kids have all these desires for these classes. If they can play that puzzle together, it can sometimes be a challenge. You know, if a kid wanted to take a class, you know.
Yeah.
I want to take, I want to take five classes, I want to take four classes, quarter one, quarter two, but I also want to take a special one class online, so knock that out.
So when we think about the, the Edmentum, what they offer K twelve, they, they offer quite, quite extensive course catalog for kids at the secondary level. And there are opportunities for, for courses that are available that we may not even teach, like Chinese, I'm not sure if they have Chinese, but there's some unique types of courses that we may not be able to offer, but that's something Zach and I are going to have to work through. I think what we want to start, start off with is the shells for next year in terms of core classes, and then find out how that looks, and then consider, are there some unique circumstances where, you know, hey, I can't take this class, could I potentially take this course?
I was just thinking about, you know.
In addition to our.
Yes, I, I think the one thing I just interjecting, you guys help me, this is always something I heard, I don't know how rigorous Apex is.
Okay, yeah.
Right, and so, you know, I mean, if there's someone trying to do that ad, I don't know that that's the person that we want to, which is direct towards Apex. No, it's maybe different.
Yeah, Edmentum is, it's much more rigorous curriculum.
Right, yeah, that's the, I mean, when I see what you're saying, is there a possibility?
With the opportunities.
This semester, if I don't get this, then I can't get this.
It's just not counting that when it's Apex or nine dollars or. On a small scale, we use Apex to enroll kids in the summer for help, which is a required course, so they didn't have to worry about it for a freshman year. But move on to other, like, we've done that more, limited and very selective type of, of courses.
Yeah, and in some ways, it's exciting for a smaller district that can't offer, some of the, you know, couldn't offer multiple, um, four to, you know what I mean? They might have another opportunity to do that, so, I mean, obviously, there's a possibility.
You know, I, if you plan to survey our current students or families who are online, just to get a sense, how many exactly are planning on coming back again, I've talked to a handful of families and they, they say they're planning on coming back in the fall, but I haven't had an opportunity to talk with every fan since.
So Josh, so Josh, I assume that this is a contractual relationship?
Yes, it is.
So is that, I mean, we do that before the fall in terms of the fees and?
Yeah, so actually, I have a meeting with Edmentum, our Edmentum account manager on Tuesday, and we're going to start to talk through what that might look like for next year, remember, the price rates, depending on number of kids. I know this year was special, they did give a little bit of a kickback. Yeah, right, so I, so I've been curious what their pricing structure will be for next year.
See, then when we, like, this year when we did that, Josh, are we buying a lot of time?
So we buy seats.
This is basically hours.
Right, it's just seats, so basically we buy a seat.
And seats last for how long?
A year, a year.
And the year is defined by the school year?
Yep.
That's why we're focused on the K, because like, when some are additional, you take these classes, of course, yours is high school, it's class by classroom.
Right, and then. And those will be some things we'll need to, yeah, what the.
There's going to be new floors.
Exactly, okay, perfect.
And once we buy, I think it's, I don't even think, I think it's like one or two seats, we have a contract with them. So then, if we have additional interest later on, we can add seats and they just charge us.
Yeah, good, okay. Thank you.
Any else? Josh? Any board committee?
Davis was, in his absence, Davis and I had, had a short meeting with the baseball group, Brian was there, that represented there. We, by no means were reeling them back in, we just wanted to remind them that we, we do have rules referencing, you know, fees and, and how much we got to bid, quoting and all that, so I think we got them back kind of aligned, projects coming along good.
Yeah, so no more special meetings because they, they.
Right, should be, basically, maybe comment on that now.
My only thing would be, because the whole guy, that girl got them torn up. You know, that's where we run across country.
The city, the city's been on them a lot.
I'm sure, I'm sure, so I just, yeah, it's just one of those things, just as they leave, make sure that you can see it open. Yeah, okay, I just knew it was right.
With that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Do I need pointing out the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion approved consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Alaska. Second, second by who, to present, uh, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those who are big or sympathetic by saying aye. Aye, 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 opposed, same, motion carries, and. Uh, next up on the agenda is second reading board policy, three hundred and six hundred, policy committee is.
Right here.
Hi. Anything you want to say?
I don't think there's any.
What'd you say, Chris, there's a couple, some punctuational things almost, otherwise we're going to go.
Otherwise, we're good to go for the year.
You have a motion.
Sure. Put the agenda back, this, yeah, motion approved the second, second reading, then second reading, three hundred and six hundred series.
Second.
Motion by, that's the second, I will discuss it. Mostly that policy, I think, are just updates based on ISB, I think, so nothing too, uh, nothing too crazy.
Next year will be seven hundred, eight hundred members, sir.
Yeah, it'll be, so for those that are getting contracts under this, those will be coming out over the next week. One's an electronic, we can't say tomorrow, which we next Friday, so. The electronic contract process is going well, we approved the last one, so. Correct, so all the favor, consent agenda presented, signify by saying aye.
Oh, yeah.
We moved on already. Zero, three hundred and sixty.
Three hundred and six hundred series of policies, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Not an option that you guessed, Tim, this is kind of.
He's on a timer, he's on my. Exactly.
What happened to our, what happened to old lighting?
I didn't have that.
I think he's trying to get on there, you know?
Next up on the agenda is a budget amendment, so as you guys hold in fall, every year we get to the end and Pat's job is to make sure that we don't overspend in any category, so it doesn't change the overall cap of the budget. But it does allow us to shift money around between the categories, so that every category within the, within the overall budgets is within the, what we've approved. They're generally not that big of adjustments, but it is done just to make sure we keep on a straight and narrow. With that, I would add a status, I said a public hearing for the budget amendment on May twentieth, our next regular state of board meeting, that will get published in the newspaper. I didn't even mention to the public hearing for the. What did? Motion by the other guy.
Second.
Second by who? Any discussion? Three, nine, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Uh, next up is information, we have none this month, so we'll keep moving along. Board learning, NSBA recap. And you didn't feel like, so as, as the community may know, National School Board Association, held an online meeting in April eighth through the tenth. But it actually goes on, we do most of the sessions will be recorded and it can only be one at a time, and that goes on for the next nine days. So we're kind of one week into our ninety days of watching burners and whatnot. I'll just, I'll start off, I, I was able to watch some of them live and check up on a few of them. I thought it was, it was interesting, I think I found most interesting that people, who's advantage, that is, are doing it on a recorded basis. Because I mostly enjoy some of these conversations, or as many twenty minute sessions in Central Region, and we had people from the Center of the US and school board members from different states, and we're talking about the same issues and having those conversations, which is very, was very interesting, I mean, I'm giving those different perspectives, and some of them especially were dry, I think, one session I got several people from Alaska. And it was just very interesting talking about, they had one school district where the school district was comprised of forty-two kids. The superintendent was the superintendent, the principal, and the, one of the elementary school teachers. And so it would be, it's, it's interesting, you know, they had thirty-two kids and they were in an aisle. Another one had, another, another district that had school plans, because they had to fly the students between, between attendance sites, because they were scattered along the coast. It was just, it was just interesting, for activities, they got on a plane and flew to other places for basketball, which is always just a.
I think they have children getting buster.
And so it was, it was just interesting, I think the other thing, there was a lot to talk about, we have the same, so I think we talk about. How, how we can maximize the impact we can have on education and access, and that was, that was a big plus. The one thing I'll throw out that I found interesting, I thought, so I'll show you guys, and the policy committee of what is showing at them is somebody that's been really trying in Iowa, was a board member of the country, who was involved in the most, most senior role at the board table. And so there is, like, there's a couple of different sessions, students are all in the conference, and so we were passing down, we, personally, a year and a half ago, there were six groups of students walking around with this, it's a great moment, they have students on the board, they go to the board, it serves an, serves an unbelievable role. So they, they come and they, they get the same board packets, they, they get a chance to ask questions during, during the, of the session. And it's an interesting idea, I, I've got a book, I asked I if we could go to the policy, and I, I think we'll pass it off to the policy committee. I think we'll come back to that as an iteration on the next, next one, but that was, that was something that I'd like to just look at, and I think it's an interesting idea that. Because we always talk about getting that, group that input, you know, how, how do you best do that, you know, each of us plays a different perspective, professionally. Getting a perspective, you know, as we have Isaiah here, you're getting that perspective, that's a student. Obviously, you've got to, you've got to, you've got to, there's an orientation process that goes with that, so that they know what, what the, what the boundaries are, what's permissible.
So you represent like a, a middle school, high school, or?
Most of our high school.
I know most of them are, but.
And so the, the issue is you want to be set up in purity, and so now that I saw it, I got it.
I think about our own board.
Yes, yes, hopefully they aren't screwing up, yeah, with the people.
Well, I didn't know it was like.
So, I'll just go second and say unfortunately, I just haven't had a chance to.
Well, and as I said, you know, we had ninety days, we had ninety days to do that, so, as I said, this event did not, was seventy through the ninety day grant.
So. Well, I, I watched one, the thing was Sean Akers, and his thing was on joy. We really talked about how, you know, when the kids are happy, right, and they, they have joy, and they were talking about Flint, Michigan. And, and, you know, you know, they have good water, they don't, you know, all these things, with kids bringing negative attitudes, but when, when they actually have joy, they're not caught in the circumstances, the dopamine response to learning is three times. And so they learn at a better rate, and, you know, and so I think, you know, those are some of those things where it was like, whoa, you know, it, it just was like, I, you know, you never think about it. But even though those kids in those circumstances, they have these negative circumstances around them, if they can find those positive things, they just, you know, test scores go up, learning goes up, and so, you know, I think that's a challenge, especially the year we've been through and situations, and, you know, as we, we've heard all year, kids and parents line in different spots, so, you know, where, where we are and where their joy, you know, one gets wearing a mask is his joy, and if his not wearing a mask is his joy, you know, how do we get them all so that it actually impacts their learn, and that was very interesting to me.
That's a, I started that one, had a ask which ones I represented, I just started.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, talking points, we'll move on to talking points, and, you know, so talking points, Jamie.
Uh, well, actually, your student, at the very beginning, that was really, really, really impressive. I even went hard to hearing and I still could hear that, it almost dropped me to tears again, so that was amazing for an eighth grade student to, to come up with something like that, that was, that was really something to me. So I love that.
Right, yeah, so always good to have people come to the meeting and interject their concerns, whatever they all, and so, you know, the focus tonight, a hundred percent of the focus tonight is obviously on, and you scale back a little bit of some of the litigation stuff we got. Um, and so, you know, the focus tonight, I represent the focus tonight is obviously on, and you scale back a little bit of some of the mitigation stuff we got. Great to hear that, just like it wasn't the fall, and we saw the other folks coming with their concerns. Most important though, that the takeaway from that is everything that we've been doing to address all those things all the way through. So, you know, the message tonight in response to that, Davis, his section on what we've been doing, what we're talking about weekly at the administrative table. And, and how good that is, that, you know, that there's. Things we can and can't do, but there's nothing that's been brought us that we didn't already have thought about or talked about, so, that's my thing with it.
And, so as I said, the, uh, necessity is the mother of invention, and, you know, we kinda had to make our way through. This last year, and, and now we kinda get on the second half, and we get to examine. Alright, these were really bad things that these kids went through, but these are some really good things that happened. And it, it takes an opportunity for us as a ward, and, and especially at Edmonton, to really look at the things that work well. Uh, I commend the administration for really. To be honest with you, surveying students, because they are who we represent and, and what works for them and. You know, late starts and those things work for teachers too, obviously, but, but that's what the kids want, I think that's the most important thing, and I don't think we can survey the kids enough. You know, I think sometimes their voices, oh, they're just thirteen, they're just, you know, they, they get at a level that. We don't always understand because we're not in their shoes. And to, to listen to their, what they have to say, really listen to respond to that. Uh, it's, is exciting stuff that see us do and, and learning from this last year and having good things come out of it. Uh, it's exciting to.
Then, when, when you talk about student feedback, that's unfiltered honesty.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and it, and it, and sometimes you gotta open it up and it hurts a little.
Yeah.
You know, but it also makes you feel really good sometimes, so.
You know, my kind of along the same, uh, with what Mike was discussing and, uh, same as Zach. And we're tweaking schedules, things that we would've, would've thought about a couple of years ago, being flexible and, you know, like what Mike said, some of the cohort models and, um. You know, even the staggers and, uh, some of the assigned seats at lunch, I mean, things flow through a little quicker, everyone's finding kind of new ways to operate. Uh, and it's kind of a little better, so, uh, no, it's, it's great to see the, get the feedback from kids and, uh, and teachers, so.
I just appreciate everyone making up the call, I think, yeah, it's, it's right in the middle. It's always probably one big point, you, you get a lot of emails and phone calls, uh, people stopping at grocery store. And it's great to get that one-on-one feedback as well, um, some of this is nice to, everyone to hear, you know, let's, let's bridge people's minds all together once and. Yeah, I think, uh, I appreciate all the effort that goes in by all people in the buildings, all of our administrators. To make this school year work. Our goal is to get through this school year, keep our kids, uh, engaged, um, and, uh. And then, and the summer break, and come back strong this fall, so, um, we appreciate all the effort that goes into that. You can't say it often enough, but that's, uh, thanks to each and every one of the people in the buildings, they're all with their part. So, with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give a little bit of heads up before we make a motion here. Uh, the school board, we're moving to closed session, um. That is, to this form of certain, certain circumstances, uh, with my law, we're gonna be forced to close session at night. And so we'll indicate a motion, we will leave the closed session. So we will, I will do that, I will excuse everybody at that point in time that's not involved in that closed session. Uh, we will return from that closed session, uh, take any action necessary pursuant to that closed session. Uh, that on the record, and then we will, uh, adjourn after that, so, uh. So just so we're all on the same page, Josh, based on the benchmark, legal council. Meeting will stay live while, while we're closed session. Uh, the online, those are online, whether or not anybody stays on or not, we'll, we'll keep that live, and then. We'll come back, so we'll leave this room when we go to closed session.
Oh, I see.
Does V doesn't shut off.
Eat wide, as we're in this room, we're just going to go someplace now. Then, I just want everyone to be on the same page, since we're in a huge moment, we're going, we will come back up here. So everything running, and then we'll return in open session, and we'll finish up up here, so, if you're online. You're welcome to stay online, because it will be live, it'll be quiet for a while, and, uh. And we can't tell you when we're coming back, but we don't know, um, we'll come back whenever we can get back.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session, this is a, point one, point five, subsection one, I.
Motion identified, second by Luska, I can read the closed session, Chris, can you follow the roll or follow up?
Uh, yes, Wolf, here.
Yes or no?
Jessica.
Yes.
Coons.
Yep.
Alessa.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Okay, we will, so we. We're back in open session at eight twenty-four PM, Chris, can you follow the roll?
I can, Wolf, here, Jessica.
Yeah, yes.
Coons.
Here.
Alessa.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
All present.
My understanding is that, uh, we have a motion in light of the fact that, uh, compromises were reached while we're deliberating.
Yep, I am motion to dismiss the appeal because of compromised spending.
Motion by Wolf, second, second by Luska, this is a roll call vote, uh, on, on the motion to dismiss. A yes is a vote, a yes is, is, is to dismiss, and no is to not dismiss.
Hey, Wolf, yes, Jessica. Coons.
And say.
Alessa.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. The most, uh, the appeal is dismissed. Uh, you'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Jessica, second, second by Wolf. Oh, I can't, they might be saying aye, aye, we are adjourned.